March 3rd. May Bemis Tucker, caseworker, casework supervisor one, retirement effective May 2nd. Selena Velez, full-time correctional officer resignation effective February 14th. Tyler Wimmer, full-time correctional officer resignation effective February 26th. And Olivia Spees, adult probation officer resignation effective March 7th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Under, under changes to status, transfer and promotions, I have several motions. The first is to approve the 2020 Civil Service Compensation Plan, which pertains to Children in Youth Services, MHI DEI Area Agency on Aging, and the Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse Fund for the 2020 to 2021 fiscal year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2020 Civil Service Plan.
Second.
Here we have a motion in the second on the floor to approve that plan. Questions?
Sure, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can we go back a moment? She said about a termination, the very first person. Can you divulge what the termination was for?
No.
No? All right.
Anything with regard to this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
The next motion is to approve entering into a collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local 429 involving Lebanon County Social Services Agencies, represented employees at the Area Agency on Aging, MHI DEI, Drug and Alcohol, and Children in Youth Services, for the term of January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2023. Highlights of the collective bargaining agreement include a four-year term, wage increases of 3.5% for the first two years and 3% for the remaining two years, increased on-call compensation, non-economic revisions to several articles, changes in the computation of overtime workers' compensation, agreement leaves sick leave, jury duty, and vacation time, as well as increases in the medical insurance deductibles.
I'll make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local 429.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve that bargaining agreement. Any questions or comment? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Motion to approve Chief, Chief Clerk of Voter Registration, Michael Anderson's request to have the current voter registration employee work an additional 2.5 hours per week, not to exceed 40 hours per week, effective March 9, 2020, through May 8, 2021.
I'll make a motion to extend the increased hours for the voter registration.
And I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve those extra hours for the primary season. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Janine Valentine, promotion from Secretary D in the District Attorney's Office to Administrative Specialist in the District Attorney's Office at the rate of $1,197.66 biweekly, effective March 9. Eric Faylor, change of status from Deputy Director of 911, Department of Emergency Services, to 911 Tac and Records Officer at the $1,920.85 biweekly, effective March 9. And Jeremy Leffler, promotion from 911 Supervisor in the Department of Emergency Services to the Deputy Director of 911, at the rate of $2,293.61 biweekly, effective March 9.
I'll make a motion to approve those transactions.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve those transactions. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, so moved. May I just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be curt, but I was in the middle of another motion, but there are very, but there are very few ways that we can divulge anything about a termination for personnel matters.
That's fine. I'll, I'll forward your request, it's fine. Right, so okay, it's fine.
I'm sorry, may I ask your name, please, so I know who are?
My name is Adrian Can.
I'm sorry.
Adrian Can, A-D-R-I-A-N, last name is C-A-N-N.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry.
Under other transactions, I have a motion to approve Robert Dowd, Director of the Department of Emergency Services, request to create 10 casual, part-time, hourly positions within his department, two chief officer positions at a grade eight, two non-officer positions at a grade seven, and six technician positions at a grade six, all in the non-union salary chart, effective March 9, 2020. These positions will assist the coroner's office of transporting the deceased, and all costs associated with these positions are 100% reimbursed via invoicing for all services required.
I'll make a motion to approve the Director Dowd's request.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve this motion. Any questions or comments, any clarification needed? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
The Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Jeffrey Sky as an Operations Chief Officer One, at the rate of $14.69 per hour, effective March 9. The Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Michael Howser as an Operations Chief Officer Two, at the rate of $14.06, effective March 9. The Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Samuel Day as an Operations Line Officer, at the rate of $13.10 per hour, effective March 9. The Department of Emergency Services would like to hire the following three operations technicians, all at the rate of $12.18 per hour, all effective March 9, and they are Jeffrey Yateley, Jonathan Zekman, and Logan Day. President Judge Toawak would like to hire Mallory Barr as an Adult Probation Officer One, at the rate of $1,628.86 biweekly, effective March 9. President Judge Toawak would like to hire Marissa Templeton as a Juvenile Probation Officer One, at the rate of $1,628.86 biweekly, effective March 23. The Sheriff's Office would like to hire Ethan Cooperstein as a full-time Deputy Sheriff, at the rate of $1,117.72 biweekly, effective March 9. And voter registration would like to rehire Ann Dowbert as a casual, part-time general clerk, see, at the rate of $10.54 per hour, effective March 9.
I respectfully request that Samuel and Logan Day be pulled out to be separate.
Do we have a reason for that?
Because they're related and...
To each other?
I think they're brothers.
So you want them handled separately because they're related?
Well, the one is a line officer and one is a technician, and our policy and our handbook would not allow that to happen.
Any comment? Okay, then let's do that, then.
Okay, so a motion to accept all of the transactions previously read, except for Samuel Day and Logan Day.
I'll so move.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve those new hires and rehires, except for two exceptions. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
All right, the Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Samuel Day as an Operations Line Officer One, at the rate of $13.10 per hour, effective March 9. And the Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Logan Day as Operations Technicians, at the rate of $12.15 per hour, effective March 9. And these are for the casual, part-time hazmat positions that are just in the motion board, so they're not...
So these are casual, part-time positions?
To, to assist the coroner's office with, 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 yes, and not in the department of emergency.
Potentially some hazmat, I understand.
And some hazmat, yes.
If, if, but primarily for the coroner.
Well, I'm comfortable making the motion to hire those two gentlemen, based on our discussion yesterday about the fact that these are part-time casual positions and actually that one is designated, I guess, as a line officer, but will really not be assigning duties and so on to the other, and that they have worked as volunteers together in the hazmat division, so I'm comfortable making the motion to hire.
It's been moved, will you second? Any comment or, any further comment, I should say, regarding this motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Split vote passes two to one, the ayes have it.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all the transactions previously read, plus the following. Luis Martinez, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison, to the rate of $17.01, effective February 24th. Naturally, the following three will also receive the same incremental increase, they are all full-time correctional officers of the prison, all at the rate of $17.01, and all were effective February 24th, and that is David Lesbrans, Austin Ritchie, and Victoria Morales.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve those salary board requests. Any comments, questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
For mandated conference seminars, I have Erin Boyer and Karen Alonso from Children in Youth, would like to attend the Needs-Based Plan and Budget Overview of Mechanicsburg, May 26th, with Mileage Reimbursement by Credits mandated by DHS. Jody Boyd, Karen, Karen Castillo, and Toddith Bellzack from Children in Youth, would like to attend the Trauma-Informed Training in Harrisburg, April 29th, Mileage Meals Tools Reimbursement by Credits mandated by DHS. Susan Everick, Courtney Cole, and Amanda Frank from Children in Youth, would like to attend the Family Service Planning in Mechanicsburg, April 14th and 15th, Mileage Meals Tools Reimbursement, 12 credits mandated by DHS. Susan Everick, Courtney Cole, and Amanda Frank, also from Children in Youth, would like to attend the Achieving Permanency in Mechanicsburg, April 20th, Mileage Meals Tools Reimbursement, 6 credits mandated by DHS. Bailey Van Fleet from Children in Youth, would like to attend Working with Juvenile Sexual Fandom, Mechanicsburg, April 16th and 17th, Mileage Meals Tools Reimbursement, 12 credits mandated by DHS. Keith Smith from Children in Youth, would like to attend the following two trainings, Transition, Transition Conference in Scranton, March 12th, Mileage Meals Tools Reimbursement, 6 credits mandated by DHS. And Statewide Adoption and Permanency Network Meeting in Harrisburg, April 21st, Mileage Meals Tools Reimbursement, 6 credits mandated by DHS. Nicole Rula and Angelica Borisi from Children in Youth, would like to attend the Train the Trainer in Harrisburg, March 4th and 5th, Mileage Reimbursement, 12 credits mandated by DHS. Catherine Kenfield and Blair Beer from Children in Youth, would like to attend the Caseworkers' Seeking responsiveness in Childs of Aquabrain Practice in Wyoming, March 26th, Mileage Meals Reimbursement, 3 credits mandated by DHS. Samuel Ortiz and Christine Hartman from Community Action Partnership, would like to attend Fiscal Training Workshop in Harrisburg, March 19th, Mileage Meals Parking and Tools Reimbursement, mandated by DCEV. Jason Weichel and John Wilson from DES, would like to attend the Homeland Security Exercise Evaluation Program in Harrisburg, April 21st and 22nd, with Meals Reimbursement, 16 credits mandated by PIMA. Jason Weichel and John Wilson from DES, would like to attend the PIO Awareness in Harrisburg, July 16th, Meals Reimbursement, 8 credits mandated by PIMA. Eric Fowler and Jeremy Leffler from DES, would like to attend the 2020 Tac Training in Hershey, April 16th, 6 credits mandated by PSP. Jason Weichel from DES, would like to attend the Emergency Planning in Harrisburg, May 13th and 14th, Meals Reimbursement, 16 credits mandated by PIMA. And Dowd from DES, would like to attend the National Emergency Member Association Conference in Long Beach, California, June 13th through the 18th, $549 total registration fee, with lodging, meals, parking, tools, and flight reimbursement, mandated by PIMA, and is all 100% my law and funded. Jennifer Whitman from the DES Office, would like to attend the PA Problem-Solving Court Coordinator Symposium, in Hershey, March 30th through end of 31st, no registration fee, 11 credits mandated by AOPC. Susan Christner and White Penberth from Probation Services, would like to attend the Chief Juvenile Probation Membership Meeting in State College, March 12th and 13th, lodging, meals reimbursement, 4 credits mandated by JCJC. Amanda Ramos and Susan Platt from Probation Services, would like to attend Managing Emotions Under Pressure in Lancaster, March 10th, $294 total registration fee, with Meals Reimbursement, 6 credits mandated by PBPP. Brenda Santiago, Jody Little, and Heather Onerick from Probation Services, would like to attend the same training, Managing Emotions Under Pressure in Harrisburg on March 18th, $447 total registration fee, Meals Reimbursement, 6 credits mandated by PBPP.
Make a motion to approve the conference and seminar request?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve those mandated requests. Any comment or question? Seems like a long list, but just to remind everybody, these are mandated, and they are for departments that have high compliance requirements, so that's all part of the, if their education. No comments, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Under non-mandated conferences, Samuel Ortiz from Community Action Partnership, would like to attend the Dealing with Difficult and Challenging Employees in Situations in Harrisburg, May 13th, $60 total registration fee, with Mileage Meals Parking and Tools Reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve that cap request. Any more questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Gary Burna and Jason Weichel from DES, would like to attend the Hazmat Conference in Baltimore, Maryland, in June 3rd through the 7th, $880 total registration fee, with lodging reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve that hazmat request. Questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so ordered.
Joseph Morales from DES, would like to attend the Governor's Emergency Preparedness Summit in Mount Pocono, May 17th through the 20th, $50 registration fee, with lodging and meals reimbursement.
Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in, moved in second that we approve that DES request. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Michelle Edris, Leanne Shank, and Stephanie Noel from Human Resources, would like to attend the 2020 ByCon Health Benefits Seminar in Lancaster, April 2nd and 3rd, $100 total registration fee, with mileage, mileage, meals, and parking reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve that HR request. Questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, if you'd like to introduce yourself and your team, then you may proceed.
Sure. Well, good morning. My name is Holly Waitey, Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Community Intervention Program, that's what defines a lot of us, apparently.
Hello, I'm Monica Boyer. I'm the Consultation Education Coordinator at Lebanon County MHI DEI, and also a member of the Planning Committee for Developmental Disability. And I'm Maureen West, Executive Director of the ARC Lancaster Lebanon, and I'll give a couple minutes explaining what we do when we're done making our presentations.
We have experienced many positive changes within the developmental disability service system over the years. Our team has been diligently planning events for the month of March, and developmental disabilities awareness month, and that month will highlight the past, present, and future for developmental disability services. Monica and Maureen have been part of that team, and a very important part of that planning team, and have more details for you with regard to the month of March.
So, just wanted to let you know that we are planning lots of activities to commemorate the month. I'll share some of those. The first one was actually Tuesday evening, which was March 3rd, which Chris attended. Palmyra High School does an evening of transition, and it's open to all of Lebanon County. So Chris went out with information about our agency to let people know how to get in touch with us, and get their individuals and students involved with planning for their future. Tomorrow night is the First Friday Art Walk in Lebanon County, and we will be there with our Penhurst exhibit. March 7th and 14th are two Saturdays that the Art Council is open as well, that the exhibit will be open from 10 to 1:00. And then March 12th is kind of like our, our highlight event of the month, and we'll be, we will be featuring the Penhurst Traveling Exhibit, and our program is called Past, Present, and Beyond, and it is the story of Penhurst. It is a 12-panel presentation, and in addition to that, we will be having guest speakers. Jean Cyril is a former Penhurst resident and a self-advocate, and she will be there speaking about her experiences. And also Kristin Aaron, who is the Deputy Secretary for the Council of the Office of Developmental Programs, and she, she'll be there to speak about where we're going with our services, and how the state is looking forward to services for individuals with developmental disabilities. And we will also be debuting a wonderful video that we just completed with the newest productions, and it features many individuals in Lebanon County with a developmental disability, and it talks about their everyday life. So we're just letting people know that just because someone has a disability, they live an everyday life, just like you and I. So it's a really cool video, and that'll be our great premiere, to debut that on that day. And then the last thing we're doing, I'm gonna let Maureen talk about, and that is March 17th, and there's a community, community education session on the ABLE program.
What the ARC Lancaster Lebanon does, we've been in Lebanon for two years. The ARC Adolphin served Lebanon County for many years before, but then there was a break of no ARC chapter. The ARC is an advocacy agency that helps parents with disabilities and individuals with disabilities navigate the service system. And as commissioners, and through Lebanon County, you've received funding from the state that goes through the county to serve these folks. And with that, as there should be, there's rules and regulations and policies related to how that money is spent through waivers supporting the services through your local providers. And so what we are as the ARC, is I have an advocate on staff in the training that we do, is come alongside the county, the providers, the families, the individuals, to help them figure all this out, because it's a very complicated system using Medicaid funds. And if you're a family affected by a disability, or a person with a disability, you're so busy managing your life that you really don't have time to go into Harrisburg or read the 6,400 regulations, or a waiver that's 300 pages long. And so what we do is we have helped to become the system expert, to empower them to take control of their lives. And what we've done is partnering with MHI DEI, is just to come along, and the support coordinators, and the, and the providers that provide, to just say, we're a partner here. And one of those ways is to provide trainings. We have the ABLE account, because if you're receiving Medicaid fund, there's a $2,000 asset limit, and so people need to know how to save to do things they need without that asset limit getting in the way. There's special needs trust, but that's usually for a large pool of money. An ABLE account is more like a checking account, it can be, to just help with the day-to-day expenses. It's sort of like a health savings account, but with rules and regulations related to that. And so what we do, we have, right now, we're doing a course for the individuals with disabilities, which they like to be identified as self-advocates, called Sense and Sensibility, which is given a money management course that intersects with advocacy. So we talk about wants and needs, we talk about when you spend money, that if someone asks you to do something, when it can become abusive, and when you need to, but it's also that it's their money, and they have the right to ask who's ever managing their money, about their money. So it helps to do, put some protections in place, because vulnerability is usually the biggest reason why people are scared to have, let people have an everyday life. So what we do is try to come along and help people to put their own protections in place. So we're just here as a partner, and because we just wanted you to know, and I appreciate our opportunity to say, this is what we do. We've been serving Lebanon County for a couple of years now. Our office is in Lititz, because both counties are very large, so we come to Lebanon. We bring everything up here, we do not expect Lebanon to come down to Lititz, but really some of Lancaster County is larger than a half an hour away, too, so both counties. But we're very respectful that this is the county up here, and the folks up here, and we appreciate being able to serve up here, and just wanted to give you a couple minutes to know, we're here as a resource. We're here advocating for the budget for base funds, helping to bring the money into the local county. We're working, working with legislators right now, as the budget is going, hearings are going on, to help them understand the importance of where this money goes and what it does. So we're advocating on your behalf, too, to make sure that money keeps coming forward, because some of that's used for emergency funds, for helping serve people. People, lives change quickly, and if we didn't have those funds, we, the county would not be able, the sports coordinators, to help. So we're here to be a partner, to say, this is what it's done, and working with area legislators, too, in the government. So thank you for the time.
All right, got a proclamation?
Proclamation.
Whereas President Ronald Reagan proclaimed March as National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in 1987, and whereas, new opportunities have been created through the efforts of those with developmental disabilities and their family members, along with professionals and officials at all levels of government. Working together, they have brought about significant changes in the public perception of young people and adults with developmental disabilities, opening new doors to independent and productive lives. And whereas, March commemorates the progress in improving the lives of people with intellectual and developmental, developmental disabilities, and highlights the challenges that remain in achieving full inclusion. Whereas, people with developmental disabilities are defined by their strengths and abilities, and not by their disability, and are entitled to the respect, dignity, equality, safety, and security afforded to all members of society. Whereas, people with developmental disabilities belong in the community, fully included and actively participating in all aspects of society. And whereas, companies that provide systems of support have made tremendous progress in promoting and protecting the rights of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and actively support their full inclusion and participation in the community throughout their lifetime without regard to diagnosis. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lebanon County, Pennsylvania, that the County of Lebanon does hereby celebrate and recognize the month of March 2020 as Developmental Disability Awareness Month in Lebanon County. The Lebanon County Board of Commissioners recognize and appreciate the many benefits, all the systems of support due to promote and protect the rights of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We urge all Lebanon County residents to re, to recognize and dismantle barriers and the stigma that keeps individuals with disabilities from fully participating in our community, and support equal treatment of individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities. I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation as read.
And I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve the proclamation as read. I just want to add that my brother Jeffrey worked at ARC for many years up in Scranton, and my mom was on the advisory board, and all very high-quality service provided through ARC, so thank you for all that you folks do.
Thank you. Yes, and the ARC of Northeast PA is a stellar chapter.
Yes, very much so. Thank you.
We would, we would like to thank the county commissioners for all your ongoing support as we serve individuals with developmental disabilities, we very appreciate to have all your support.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so ordered. You and Danny's. Okay, good, yes.
How do we want that?
And then I'll meet your names.
Why is it locked over here?
Jane, you move to your right. Ma'am, you had to move. To your right, yeah, that one, the middle.
Go behind us.
Okay.
How did you hear that? How'd you hear that?
Because you called off.
Oh, that's why, that's how you heard it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we were down in December.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk, Voter Registration. I do have several things today. I will go through them as quick as possible, because I know time is money. First up, I guess, we'll talk about the ballot. So I did just give you an update for the Democratic ballot. I'm sorry. There you go. We did have officially three of the presidential candidates withdraw from the Pennsylvania ballot, so I do present that to you. I will let you know, I do have it upstairs now with Bruce to double-check all my Spanish. I had it for four years, but yeah, you know, that goes. But, so what I would like is the board to give approval for the ballot with maybe the request that giving me the authorization, if there are any changes that come in that they did not yet give to us, that I could go ahead and make those changes and move forward. Otherwise, I would have to come back in two weeks.
And the changes would be deletions of candidates.
Right, withdrawals. Yeah, so yesterday was the last day, and the state gave us a list towards the end of the day yesterday. That's why I gave you those updates that I made this morning. But it's possible that there could be other withdrawals that they have not given us, given to us yet. I know there's one challenge for one petition for Laura Quick in the Democratic side for the ninth representative in the ninth district. I do not believe that, even if she loses, that will take her off. I think they just would make that petition invalid. What we got so far on that is that she is still on, so. But I have to have all of that stuff cleared up before I can really officially do anything.
Okay. Mr. Litz?
Yes. Michael, can you explain the process for the Democratic delegates? For instance, if Pete Buttigieg, thank you, close, I guess, withdrew, but his delegates are still listed.
Yes.
How does that impact the election?
Very good question. So the Department of State actually gives us those lists of who's committed to whom. And they have informed us that they are working on that now, and if there are any changes that come in that they did not yet give to us, that I could go ahead and make those changes and move forward. Otherwise, I would have to come back in two weeks.
And the changes would be deletions of candidates.
Right, withdrawals. Yeah, so yesterday was the last day, and the state gave us a list towards the end of the day yesterday. That's why I gave you those updates that I made this morning. But it's possible that there could be other withdrawals that they have not given us, given to us yet. I know there's one challenge for one petition for Laura Quick in the Democratic side for the ninth representative in the ninth district. I do not believe that, even if she loses, that will take her off. I think they just would make that petition invalid. What we got so far on that is that she is still on, so. But I have to have all of that stuff cleared up before I can really officially do anything.
Okay. Mr. Litz?
Yes. Michael, can you explain the process for the Democratic delegates? For instance, if Pete Buttigieg, thank you, close, I guess, withdrew, but his delegates are still listed.
Yes.
How does that impact the election?
Very good question. So the Department of State actually gives us those lists of who's committed to whom. And they have informed us that they are working on that now, and if there are any changes, then they'll let us know. So kind of with the part of course of what I was asking before is if they do give me those changes, I would like to go ahead and make them, because my guess is they may be reaching out to these delegates to see if they will be switching their commitment. That's obviously only on the Democratic side. On the Republican side, they do not have to give who they're committed to.
So that is...
So at this point, nothing has changed, but it's very possible that it could, because they have, the department's well aware of the fact that some of these candidates have withdrawn, but they don't know if the delegates are gonna withdraw or if they may just change their allegiance.
Switch allegiance.
Type of deal.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to give approval for the ballot?
I'll make a motion to approve the ballot.
I'll second the motion. I do have a question. I'm trying to figure this out. So the corrections are only on the Democratic side?
At this point, yes. So on the Republican side, we had one, is it Stephen Michael Wolf withdrew as an alternate delegate to the convention?
Okay.
So he's off. So it could be on either side, the withdrawals that we've received. But at this point, yes, it's, you know, the major ones that we have.
So on the Republican side, his name would still show up as a delegate? Is that what we...
Stephen Michael Wolf?
Yeah.
So he is running as a delegate, but he withdrew as an alternate delegate.
Okay.
All right. I have a motion and a second to approve the primary ballots as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, your ballots are approved, sir.
Thank you. Next order of business would be the request to move four polling locations. Those four locations I have listed for you would be in the first ward, middle, moving from the Good Sam, I think we've talked about that before, moving to the Lebanon Church of the Brethren. In the Lebanon six ward, St. Benedict's Parish Center has asked us to find a new location. So we were looking at the Lebanon Community Health Center. There was a question, actually, it was on the radio this morning, because someone was concerned that they, we were having them go into locations where patients were being seen. That's actually not the case with the community center. What it actually is, is you would go right into their lobby. We would have signs posted immediately to the right, there's a meeting room, and that's where the voting would be. And so we had picked that place because of the accessibility parking.
Parking.
Yeah, we've always, Commissioner Phillips knows, the parking tickets have always been issued in the six ward, so hopefully it solves some of those issues. Bethel Mount Zion, basically just going from their engine house, which is just right up the street, down to their social hall, which is actually, it gets a lot more room, a lot more parking, accessible, really nice place. But the address changes, so I thought it was important to have it as an official change. And in South Anvil, we've talked for a while now about the space concerns and the parking concerns at the community building. I did go over to the Fontana Chapel. I know there's some concerns. First of all, the space is great there. The parking in the back is wonderful, handicap, everything. Accessibility is really, really good. I know there were some concerns brought up about getting out of there, turning from Fontana, I believe it's Fontana Avenue, onto three-twenty-two Orchard Pike. But one of the things that voters have to remember is you could actually, when you come out, because everything's gonna be in the back, if you turn right onto Fontana Avenue, that will actually take you the back way, I guess, and you could eventually then get on to, is that two forty-one?
Nine thirty-four.
Nine thirty-four, sorry, nine thirty-four. So then you could completely avoid that intersection of left and right, right there at the chapel. You could actually go right and avoid all that. So I think this would be a great move and change for us. The police department has been really good about helping with parking and stuff there, but within the presidential, even with the changes with Act Seventy-Seven, I think it would be a really good place for us to. So those are my recommendations for the four moves.
Okay. Can I have a motion to change the four polling?
Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
I should, I'm sorry, I should make one point. So basically, I'm asking for today is just your approval to basically post it for thirty days, we'll have press release, comments, and then I'll come back beginning of April, and that will be official.
Okay. So the motion should be just to post these, folks?
Comment period.
Yep. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So order? Anything else?
Yes. So I've also emailed you, and I'd like to go over some of the changes that I would like to propose for the primary general election being held on April twenty-eighth. And the first one being that I would like to change a little bit of how we have our voters vote, in a way. So we would still do the check-in, we would do the eligibility, we have little cards that show that once somebody checks in at a polling location, that they're eligible. Here in the primary, it would be Democrat, Republican, so we can give them the right ballot. What we would like to propose to change to is to just give people a paper ballot, but have a sign posted saying that if they would like to use a machine, that they can, they just need to request it. Kind of moving away from choice of asking us every time, first of all, because it would save us time at the precincts, and I can tell you from all, everything that we look at as far as lines at polling locations, the lines occur at check-in. So the check-in, because it's a manual process with a book, and somebody has to find the name, that's where the lines occur, and then that would go into also where people then, would then receive their ballot. So one of the things we also noticed with the last two elections using this voting system is that we were also then having lines at machines, but no lines for the booths for some of the two, that you use the paper. So we kind of just wanted to streamline it, still give people the choice, but have them ask, instead of us asking every time, because we think that would make it a little bit faster for us, and would eliminate some of the lines and complaints that we get when we were asking people, there would not be enough ballot marking devices at precincts, and then they would tell us that we need to, we need to get more, and we had that discussion that we're not going to purchase more, so I think that also would kind of, I wouldn't say solve that problem, but kind of address that issue. Did you want me to keep going, or did you want to talk about these one by one, or?
No, I think we can deal with them as a block.
Okay. The second would be that we will be procedural change in the general election. We give the, if the voter decides to use a ballot marking device or a machine, they would be given their ballot, and they would insert it and do everything on their own. We can't have them do that in the primary, because the party needs to be selected on the machine. That needs to be done by a poll worker. So procedural, what we would do is if somebody selects and decides they want to use a machine, then the poll, a poll worker would take their ballot, activate the ballot marking device, select the party based on that card that they were given, and then the voter would do the rest of the process. So there's still privacy, they're not going to see anything, it's just activating to make sure they're getting the right ballot. That needs to be done by a poll worker, not by the voter. Third thing is, I'm going to purchase security shields, or privacy shields, I guess we would call them, that will go over the sides of our scanners. One of the biggest complaints that we had the last two elections is privacy, and people could see, especially our poll workers that are at the scanners themselves, see how people vote. I will take responsibility for that. We were very concerned that people would have problems with how and what to do inserting their ballots, and so I had them be right there, omnipresent. Hindsight, probably a little bit too present. So what we're gonna do now is, we're gonna have them, we're gonna train them to move back, have the privacy shields, have the individuals go up, there is instructions right on the screen on how to insert their ballot. If they need help, the person will be there to help them, but they won't be, boom, right there, they'll be back behind. And then the shields will be there, because that way it will help, I think, give them more of a feel of the privacy that they were kind of searching for with their ballot. As you saw in today's ballot, the Democratic ballot is only one-sided, so they can flip that over and obviously put that in any way into the scanner. The Republican ballot does have one contest on the back. We will be providing folders for individuals that if they want to take a folder with them at all times, and they carry their ballots, and they'll see it till they get up there, scan the ballot, hand it to a poll worker in the folder. So we took the privacy issue very seriously, and we're working towards that. I think a lot of it had to do with training and just maybe adjusting some of the ways we were doing some things, so that's, that's a big one that we're gonna do, those. And then obviously making sure we have our polling places set up correctly. I think we've kind of, in the last two elections, made sure that we addressed any of those issues, make sure that, you know, the way they're addressed and set up in the polling location is as tight as possible. So with this primary election, I am gonna propose that five of our locations receive two scanners. So what that means is those locations, those are our biggest locations as far as registered voters, with Cornwall North running the mix because of Cornwall Manor. They will have two scanners, so basically that mean, what that means is, when the voter comes up, instead of just one place they, they need to go, they will be two. So they can use either one, that will help alleviate the lines in those places as far as whether they're done and then scanned. Because some of the things that we would hear, we heard is some people felt like there was a line, or could be a line, you know, once they're done with their ballots, and we think that addresses that in those precincts. And with Act Seventy-Seven, vote at home, absentee, and the number of them you expect to receive from that, starting here in the primary, we think that will alleviate some of the other issues in some of the other precincts where we think one scanner should be sufficient. I do have six scanners that our rovers have at all times, so at any point, if we get some feedback or we hear something where we know that we might need to put an extra scanner, we can actually do that on election day. And I have it listed on which, so it's Cornwall North, North Lebanon Middle, North Lebanon West, North Lebanon Dairy East, which is Lebanon Dairy Village, and South Lebanon Dairy North, which is the community private church. Those are the five that we have two scanners. I already requested the four polling place changes. And last but not least, due to Act Seventy-Seven and the mail-in absentee ballots being sent, or going to now not be sent to the polling locations, are going to be centrally scanned. My recommendation has been that we would not start canvassing those ballots until Wednesday morning. It has to be a public meeting. We can't actually even touch them until eight o'clock on election night for the sheer numbers we're looking at. We're at almost five hundred ballots right now received in our county, and technically doesn't start until next Monday.
You have the ballots back.
So, well, we have the applications, five hundred already processed, so received. So the state opened the online application about three weeks ago. We made the decision, anybody that heard about it, read about it, had an application, sent it in to us, we processed it. So they're basically in queue waiting for the ballots to be ready, nothing's been sent, obviously, because these aren't ready yet, but they're in the system just kind of waiting, and we already have five hundred. So we had, we had eleven hundred total in the primary in twenty sixteen, we're already at five hundred, and we're at, what, fifty-some days out from, so we're gonna way break that record. So with all that said, the canvassing cannot start until eight o'clock on election night for those ballots. There is other things that we need to be doing at eight o'clock on election night besides canvassing ballots, and so I don't think we'll be able to finish and do everything we need to do in our office on election night the way the law is currently worded. And I would like to make that a public meeting on Wednesday, so that we can adequately address those ballots, canvass them, and then scan them with the central scanners that we have. I can tell you throughout the Commonwealth, that is how most counties are going to do it, and we all have been working with our representatives and trying to change that, and I can tell you, I talked to Representative David yesterday, and they do have a bill that's gonna be pending, that's gonna come out after the primary, that we'll address that for the general, because we do want to be able to scan these ballots on election night, it's just the canvassing opening that will take a lot of time, that we just won't have time to do election night. So that is my last recommendation, and I thank the board for your time.
Do we need to act on those?
Yeah, two things on, well, one thing, just to, just to go a little bit further on that last one, that'll occur in here, so we'll block out this room, probably not schedule a workshop that Wednesday afternoon, just leave this room open, because it's, as he said, a public meeting. This is where you conduct computation, so it only makes sense, I think, to do everything in here for as long as it, it'll take. Yeah. And to your question, I would say, yes, these are, these seem to be policies, you know, for how to establish and set up the polling places and how you're gonna conduct the canvassing of those absentee ballots, so, you know, I think adoption of those procedures and policies is pretty much important.
Mr. Litz?
Yes, I have a comment and a question. I'd like to thank you for your hard work on this. It does not go without justice. And especially at the last election, the biggest comments I had, which I think I shared with you, was the fact that the privacy at the scanners needed to be addressed, and you've done that, thank you. The other question that I had also evolved from the previous election, and that is, when you walked into a room and there were all of those privacy shields, it was not evident that there was a voting machine there, and we spent a lot of money on those with the promise that people would have that option. I just appreciate that you're going to have the sign, but has any thought been given that people know the machine is still there, but has any thought been given to establishing two lines? So if somebody wants to use the machine, they could line up there, and if somebody wants to use paper ballot, they could line up there. when you walked into a room, and there were all of those privacy shields, it was not evident that there was a voting machine there, and we spent a lot of money on those with the promise that people would have that option. I just appreciate that you're going to have the sign, but has any thought been given, that people know the machine is still there, but has any thought been given to establishing two lines? So if somebody wants to use the machine, they could line up there, and if somebody wants to use paper ballot, they could line up there. Because if somebody that wants to use the machine, it's 20 people back, till they get there, and that machine sits empty, does that make sense?
It does, and it does occur, or will occur, but first of all, it has to go through the correct process, so they have to check in, so they have to go to the, to the books, the poll books, and then once they're checked in, eligible voter, which will go there, and get the card, voter ready card, then they have to go to a central place, which is the person that has the ballots. It has to be that way, because that person is responsible for all the pre-printed paper ballots and the ballot cards that activate the machines. So if they do choose to use a machine, then yes, they could go to another place where there could be a line for those machines. I think the key word is that they'll have to ask, and then they'll have to, we can, we can provide the fact of, is there a machine available, is there a wait, and then where will they need to wait?
I was going to say, but, but to have them waiting 20 people before they get to ask is the point, can they go to the line for machines?
No, they have to check in. So I have to make sure they're eligible voter first, before they can ever get, so it's kind of, you can kind of look at it.
They have to get to the poll book, otherwise you'd have to have two sets of lines with two sets of poll books.
Right, and I don't want to, and I don't want to ask them ahead of time, because I only have the set of poll books, and that's where everybody needs to go. And we do separate those lines based on alphabet, and on the experience of our poll workers to know how many books, like, we're getting calls now, someone saying, hey, can I have three books, can I have four books? Because they know how many people come into that precinct, and then what they would like the split to be, because, you know, it's real easy for me to say it should be A to L and Z, but experience, they know it needs to be A to G, and whatever the split would be. So they, that still has to occur, because I need to make sure they're, they're an eligible voter.
I hear you, let me ask you this then, does the person who directs them for check-in have the authority or discretion to say, how many are here in the first 10 for write-in? And if they say-
With paper?
Yeah, paper, I'm sorry, I, right, yeah.
I gotcha.
And they are all there, and then is anyone here for the machine, because it's sitting empty? And somebody behind them raises their hand, could they go to the head of the line to check in?
No, because I think that, I don't believe so, because I think it really needs to be as the people get there, and I think we'll have, I mean, we've had complaints because people are upset because somebody got to go, I think Dawn and I actually talked about this, somebody actually got to go to a specific line based on their alphabet, and it was shorter than the line over here because of their alphabet.
Yeah.
I can't help, you know, what part of the alphabet you are, but you get there, and how many of those same people are at the same time. I think it only makes sense and is only fair to go as people arrive and check in, and I really want to keep it, because of security of the ballots and security of the election, I think it's really important to almost have that line of, you can't get past this into the voting area until I know that you are an eligible voter. And once I know that, then they could go, and then we can create the line. But I don't, I think it's really important that we do that first, because I think it would cause kind of a lot of confusion, and I appreciate the question, because it makes sense, but I think it, it creates confusion if you're going to have, okay, these people here, these people there, or, oh, you get to go to the front, because then I think people would probably want to do that, go to the front, I, I just think it would cause confusion for the people.
Well, the machine line would grow immediately.
Right, which already kind of has, based on what people were used to. And I think one of the things that we talked about was, a lot of times, people didn't even realize, actually, kind of the opposite of what you're saying, people immediately wanted to go to the machine and didn't realize, oh, I could go to paper and there's no line? Because once they realized there was no line, then, oh, I want to do paper, so.
And that's my point, it either, it's going to take either changes at the poll, or a lot of education, so that people know they have choices.
Right, and I think the way we do that maybe is through a press release, to say, hey, you know, this, these are the types of things that we have at the polling location, one of them is that you can vote by a machine, you just have to ask. But I think people also have to be aware that they would have to, to wait, because we only have so many machines. I think where we ran into, and I will take credit for this mistake, is that, I think people, when we said choice, they immediately thought we would have enough that they would never have to wait, and, and I think then, when we said choice, and then they had to wait, then they got upset because they had to wait. And so that's kind of why we were-
I, I also think it's a good idea to mention in the press release, and maybe even on your signage, that the reason we have those machines is to accommodate ADA, people with disabilities, that in my mind, I never intended it to be a choice, that it's really to accommodate the folks that can't vote with a paper ballot.
Well, and I think part of the thing too, is there are people that just struggle, they don't really have a disability, but they just struggle with the paper ballot, and I think it's good-
That's a disability problem.
And, and I agree that we, those specific machines are for having people with handicaps or disabilities, but when we interviewed the people selling us the machines, and we were going to buy machines, we came to an agreement that they, people could vote on these machines, so it was for both. And our poll workers, our, our dedicated people who were here, were really set on having machines. Our judges of election, whoever was here when we were doing those demonstrations, I don't want to deceive the people and do a bait and switch, I want them to know they still can vote on those machines.
And that, I am recommending that they can still do that, it's just that how we do it kind of changed just a little bit.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the, the procedures and processes put forward by our director?
So moved.
A second. I have a motion, a second, any other discussion?
No, but I'd like to ask, not on this motion, but I would like it sometime to meet about electronic books, and the consolidation we talked about the other day, just so that we all have a, you know, kind of-
Sure, I can schedule something, like, you mean after the primary?
Oh, yes, after the primary, yes.
Thank you.
No, let's put it in right, maybe like a day before.
And I think the, we already have two practice runs under our belt, which a lot of counties don't have, so that was good that we got on-
Absolutely, thank you for that, and thank you, you know, being able to do that in November, and then having the pleasure of getting to do another election in January.
That's for sure, so I do appreciate the communication, you know, your on it, so we appreciate that very much.
I think all of us want to convey that message, Michael, we're very pleased with your efforts. With all that said, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, we need to adjourn.
Our suspended regular meeting is resumed, so you may introduce yourselves and then proceed.
Hi, I am Erin Moyer, I am the administrator for Children and Services. I am here today to present supplemental invoices for first, second, and third quarter of fiscal year 1819, as well as revised fourth quarter for fiscal year 1819, first and second quarter invoices for fiscal year 1920, the budget appeal for fiscal year 1819, as well as provider contracts for fiscal year 1920. First, we have supplemental invoices for the first, second, and third quarters of fiscal year 2018, 2019, in the amount of 101,004, 101,478 cents. And to go along with that, we also have the fourth quarter invoices for fiscal year 1819, in the amount of $1,616,338.58. I ask that you approve our supplemental invoices for fiscal year 1819, as well as our fourth quarter invoices for 1819.
We motion?
Yeah, those are all-
Second.
We moved in second that we approved those invoices? Questions, comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Next up, I have first quarter invoices for fiscal year 1920, and that is in the total amount of $1,785,654.89. And I ask that you approve our first quarter invoices for fiscal year 1920.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the first quarter invoices as requested. Questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Next, I have second quarter invoices for fiscal year 1920, in the total amount of $1,695,826.12. I ask that you approve second quarter invoices for fiscal year 1920.
Make a motion to approve second quarter 20 invoices as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve those second quarter invoices, any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same signs, so moved.
And two, and welcome to go. Sorry.
Next, I have the budget appeal for fiscal year 1819. So in fiscal year 1819, we were overspent on our budget in the amount of $552,000, 552, 442. Because we received 24% more Title IV funds in the state certified amount, and 40 doesn't have a cap on it, we are requesting an appeal to secure the amount of $448,584 to get that money back to make us whole. So I ask that you approve our budget for fiscal year 1819.
I'll make a motion to approve the request concerning the budget amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the appeal, any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. And finally, I have-
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Sorry, thank you. Finally, I have our provider contracts for fiscal year 1920. So our agency has a total of 59 placement provider contracts, 24 of those providers are not requesting any increases, and 20 of those are medical assisted respondant facilities, which are no cost to our agency. So the remaining 16 providers have requested an average increase of 3%, and all of those rates are within the approved state ceiling. We also have added or amended two service contracts, those are for Justice Works and Concern, and those are to add in-home services to our bank of services that we can use to prevent placement. So for Justice Works, we added short-term therapeutic outreach to prevent placement, their stop program at $80 per hour, their Just Care program at $75 per hour, their nurturing parenting program, which is an in-home parenting service for $75 an hour, as well as their Y Try program, which is a truancy remediation program at $75 an hour. And then we also have Concern, and they have services, visit coaching, which is $45.73 an hour, supervised visitation, which is $39.27 an hour, intensive family rehabilitation at $61 per hour, and also parenting education at $50.51 cents per hour. I ask that you approve our provider contracts, as well as the changes to our in-home service contracts.
I'll make a motion to approve the provider contracts and contract conditions as presented.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like to introduce yourself, Carol, and then you may proceed.
Sure, good morning, I'm Carol Davies, I'm the administrator at the Area Agency on Aging, and I know your agenda says there are two items for us to review today, but there are actually three, so don't get too excited when we get past the two, because there's still a third one to come. The first item that I have for you are contract amendments for our Area Agency on Aging providers. We have 17 amendments listed, a total of $23,205. Most of these amendments have to do with rate increases that we have granted to our providers. The Department of Aging typically does not allow us to offer rate increases without their approval. When the fiscal year starts in July, we don't know at that point if the fiscal year for a lot of the increases are not, but in the fall, we did receive a notice that we could increase the contracts by 2%, which, for some of our providers who have been limited to 2% for even some years with no increase, that's, that's very welcome. We do have funds available within our budget to pay for these increases, so we are not requesting any additional county support to plan these amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 1920 provider contract amendments.
Second the motion.
It's been moved in second, any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you. The second item I have for the review is the Farmers Market Nutrition Program contract, which is actually with the US, or the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture, not the Department of Aging. This is a program that allows us to distribute a group of four checks to seniors who are county residents and income eligible, and then they can use the checks to buy fresh produce from the state of Pennsylvania at local farmers markets. Each year, we get 1,250 cents of four, so this year, each person would get four $6 checks, last year was four $5 checks, but this year, they will each get about four $6 checks that they can use at local farmer's markets. So that brings about $30,000 of purchasing power into the county, and so what they do is they allow us up to $1,250 per year as the administrative fee to process this program.
Motion. I'll make a motion to approve the Farmers Market program as presented.
I'll second that motion.
The question is, how, how are they distributed to the income eligible?
We set up each year a number of distribution sites, we have a, and we advertise them then, so we have a site in our building, we go to each of our various senior centers, we try to go to the senior high rises, we, I think last year, or the year before, was the first year we went to Lebanon County Christian Ministries. So we go to a number of places, and sometimes the same people will come to the same place to get their check every year, but other times not. There was a year or two where we could distribute at the Children's Plus Festival, which was very popular, but this year, we're not sure if we'll be able to, because the Children's Plus Festival is two days before the technical thing, we're about to start distributing them, so we're looking to see if we can.
So it's kind of a first come, first served? They're available to be distributed if the person's eligible, and they show up, then?
Yes.
It's not a pre-selected group of income eligible?
That's correct.
Available to-
And in the past few years, we've had maybe 100 cents left. Some years, we give out more, some, some years we give out less, but 1,250 cents is about, appears to be about 100 more for us. And I do have to acknowledge, I have a hair on the, on the form, I have Commissioner Ames listed as the chair of the commissioners instead of Commissioner Phillips, so I can redo the signature pages and send this back over.
How was I?
My apologies, but I can redo that and send this back over for signature.
Okay, with that note, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Number three.
Okay, the third item I have is, is related to enrollment services that are currently provided by an independent enrollment broker in Lebanon County. And this independent enrollment broker helps people, including some seniors who are income eligible, register for what we used to call the aging waiver, and a couple other affiliated waivers, but now has become part of Community Health Choices as of January 1st this year. So for a number of years, this independent enrollment broker was doing the enrollment services. Perhaps seven or eight years ago, the Area Agency on Aging did those enrollment services, and I believe in 2014, the state determined that all of the enrollment services would not be done by Area Agencies on Aging, but would be done by this independent enrollment broker. So now, there have been what they call some pain points with this company who is doing the independent enrollment function, and what the state is looking to do is to combine two of the pieces of the enrollment process into one. So now the county assistance, county assistance office is currently involved, the independent enrollment broker is involved, and we are involved because we do the assessment for level of care, to determine if the person is clinically eligible to be in a nursing home. So what this, what the Office of Long-Term Living would like to do, or what they are doing, is they are issuing a request for, it's not a request for proposal, a request for application. for application. And we, we expect this request for application to come out any day. We've been expecting it for quite some time, but they, they really feel like it's, it's about to come out. And under this new request for application, the enrollment function and the assessment function would be together. So whatever provider is going to do the assessment function, apparently that's us, but under this program, assessment and enrollment go together. So if we get the, the contract through P4A, our state association, we would do the assessment function and the enrollment function.
The county, when you say we the county?
The, the Area Agencies on Aging, yes. If we don't get the contract, then we lose the assessment function that we're currently doing. So what, uh, P4A, our state association is looking for, is they're looking to have letters of support from every Area Agency on Aging in the state to submit with this letter about the request for application proposal, showing that we are interested in doing this work. At this point, we do not know what rate we would be paying for the work, but we are asked to show that we would be interested in supportive of this endeavor.
Do you have a template?
I do, I, I sent a, um, they gave us a template and I did include a copy of the proposed letter with your, um-
Okay. So do you want a motion to accept anything at this point, or just is that educational?
Or mine?
Well-
Motion to submit a letter, submit a letter.
A motion to submit the letter.
Start here.
I'll make a motion to submit a letter requesting that we become the agent for the enrollment process and the, what, assessment?
Assessment. The actual letter is asking us to support, the mayor is saying that we are supporting their application. I mean, I don't know if you need to, that, that suits me.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second, any questions?
I have a question. Did you say about 1,250 people will be getting the, will be eligible for the checks for the produce?
We will have 1,250 sets of those checks.
I'm not sure it's gonna go out to that many people then.
We will, they will distribute them on first come, first served basis. It's, it's quite possible that there are more people than that who would be eligible to receive the checks.
Okay. So do they need some kind of documentation then for the income eligibility?
Um, I don't have that information offhand. I don't remember if it's self-decoration or if we asked them to prove it, but when, when we promote the actual distribution sites, I don't have that information with the announcement.
Okay. When would that be then?
Uh, we will start distributing them sometime after May 15.
Okay.
And I believe they can start using them on June 1st, but again, that information will be announced when we distribute.
Okay, thank you.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All right, or same sign, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Dennis has an award for you for being a county bridge number one in Hottibook Township.
Good morning.
Morning, Dennis.
Dennis Firestone, Purchasing Agent. I was before you, two weeks ago, February 20th, to give you the bids for the Red Rock Region, Hottibook Township. And I am back before you now to ask that, based off the bids that we request, we award the bid to Mar- Mar Allen Concrete Products in the base bid of $69,952.
I'll make a motion to award the bid to Red Rock, on the Red Rock Bridge, to Mar Allen as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any questions on the motion? If you're not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign, so moved.
Thank you.
There was a significant cost difference in between engineers, certainly talked to the, to Mar Allen to make sure they-
Got it.
-got it right and understood what they were getting into. And they've done bridge work for the county before. One of the biggest differences was in mobilization costs, is that they're much more local and their mobilization was hardly needed compared to some of the other who have to travel.
Where is Mar Allen out of?
Uh, I wanna say, it's in Lancaster County.
Yeah, it is in Lancaster County.
That's, that's M-A-R-A-L-L.
M-A-R dash A-L-L-P-Y.
Okay. And that was 69,952?
Yep.
And the bridge now has a name, it's Red Rock Bridge?
Red Rock. Red Rock Bridge.
Same stone.
Or we have a bridge.
Red Rock Bridge.
Depends on which neighbor you talk to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, and three or four more of us from me. First, veteran exemption requests for exempt from real estate taxes for disability eligibility. I have one here for Marcia Nye Jacoby of Lehman Street, Lebanon, who has met all the requirements for the program.
I'll make a motion to grant real estate tax exemption as requested.
And I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second that we approved that exemption for property taxes. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign, so moved.
Okay. I have a resignation from the Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse for your consideration to accept, and that is by Sally Barry, who as you know, has Lebanon County's employee and gone on to work for the, that's my impression, the crime department, she's unable to serve anymore.
I'll make a motion to approve Sally's resignation.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve Sally Barry's resignation. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign, so moved.
Uh, we've received notice of an award for the 2019, 2019, 2020 grant in aid from the Pennsylvania Board of Probation and Parole. John Shaw was in, number of weeks ago, to submit the application. This is a type of grant where the, the formula adds up to a sizable number that we are eligible for, but the amount of money they have to distribute is much less. So we had applied originally for $1,294,426. We have been awarded $81,527, which is typical of each year, so distributed what they have. So we need your acceptance of that grant. And that goes toward the, the salaries and benefits of the probation.
Make a motion to accept the grant presented.
I'll second.
Motion in second, any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign, so moved.
And lastly, I have a proclamation here for Grace Ziegler, who will be recognized by the Lebanon Valley Sutoma Club at their annual event, which is a surprise.
Okay. Good.
Tickets tomorrow.
Yeah, it's, it's long.
She doesn't know.
Okay.
No, it's a surprise. All right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation for Grace Ziegler.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved that proclamation. Any questions, comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign, so moved.
And one last request is that we have another executive session at 12:30 for real estate today for just, you said you may go to a microphone, so it won't take very long, I hope that, it's quick, cool.
Thank you.
And, here Louis, let's talk to him, anything about our, um-
Our bond rating.
Yeah.
About the what?
Our bond rating. I missed it.
Oh, you're, like you had a good bond rating. No.
No.
She was here.
No, she was here, but I didn't know if it was published.
No, it wasn't.
No, I don't think I focused on it.
Did you submit?
Really? That was like the biggest thing in the history of the county.
Well.
At least in eight years.
Okay. I'll look back at my notes.
Yeah, seriously.
Anything in writing?
That's historic.
Yeah, I have, I have the rating and the-
And then, yeah, if you have that, I'll take that along.
Good question.
Okay.